We're going to call this meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Pursuant to NJSA 10:4, the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this duly and regularly scheduled meeting of the Jackson Township Zoning Board of Adjustment has been published and posted in all appropriate locations.
Liz, can we have roll call, please?
Mr. Hyman?
Here.
Dr. Hoffstein?
Here.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes.
Ms. Parnas?
Here.
Ms. Rosal?
Here.
Mr. Martins?
Here.
Mr. Stafford Smith?
Here.
Ms. Bradley?
Here.
Do we have any resolutions this evening, Mr. Murphy?
No resolutions tonight, Madam Chair.
Do we have any minutes this evening, Liz?
No, we do not, Madam Chair.
Okay, and I do not have a voucher, Liz. No vouchers? Oh, okay, we're moving right along. Any announcements this evening, Mr. Murphy?
Uh, yes, we do. We have, um... One announcement regarding this evening's agenda. Uh, that is, application number one, Rosenbloom variants three, four, six, four, for block thirteen, three oh one, lot nineteen, is being carried to the November twentieth, two thousand twenty-four meeting of the Jackson Township Zoning Board of Adjustment. No additional notice will be required on that application, so this is the notice that it's being carried to that date, um, and the applicant has waived time if applicable to the application. Um, we also have an announcement regarding our next meeting, which is, uh, which is scheduled, well, was scheduled for October second of two thousand twenty-four. That meeting of the Jackson Township Zoning Board of Adjustment has been canceled. Um, first, it's the, it's the first night of, um, Rosh Hashanah begins at sunset, um, and there were no applications that were listed for that evening, so we're going to be canceling that meeting. Um, the October sixteenth meeting, uh, of the Jackson Township Zoning Board of Adjustment is still scheduled to go forward, uh, but if that changes, uh, that will be published and posted. Um, so the October second meeting is canceled. Other than that, I have no more, uh, announcements this evening.
Okay. Can we swear in the professionals, please?
Thank you, gentlemen, for raising your hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments that you're about to present before the board represent the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Yes.
If you would each please state your name and your positions with the board.
Evan Hill, board engineer.
Ernie Peters, board planner.
Jeffrey Poporo, zoning officer.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Murphy, I believe we're having an executive session this evening.
Just a very brief one, Madam Chair. Uh, I will articulate the resolution on the record, um, and then I will ask that somebody make that, uh, resolution, uh, and approve by motion. Um, whereas the zoning board of the township of Jackson is subject to certain requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA ten colon four, whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA ten colon four dash twelve, provides that an executive session not open to the public may be held for certain specified purposes when authorized by resolution, whereas it is necessary for the zoning board of the township of Jackson to discuss in a section, in a session not open to the public matters relating to the item or items authorized by NJSA ten colon four dash twelve B. This being those matters, uh, this, this evening, that matter being litigation, more specifically the matter of Denton Holdings LLC versus Jackson Township and the Jack, and the Jackson Township Zoning Board of Adjustment. Now therefore be it resolved by the, uh, by the zoning board of the township of Jackson enter executive session for discussion of litigation and more specifically the matter of Denton Holdings LLC versus Jackson Township and the Jackson Township Zoning Board. It is anticipated that deliberations conducted in closed session may be disclosed to the public upon the determination that public interest will no longer be served by such confidentiality. So, uh, as requested, if I can have a, a motion to enter executive.
Motion.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Hyman?
Yes.
Dr. Hoffstein? Mr. Hudak? Ms. Parnas?
Yes.
Ms. Rosal?
Yes.
Mr. Martins?
Yes.
Mr. Stafford Smith? Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
We will return in about fif- I, I hate to say it, ten to fifteen, ten to fifteen minutes. See you in about an hour. No, just kidding, kidding.
We're going to call the meeting back to order. We need a resolution to come out of executive session, please.
A motion.
A motion.
Second. Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Hyman?
Yes.
Dr. Hofstein?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak? Ms. Parnas?
Yes.
Ms. Rosal? Mr. Martins?
Yes.
Mr. Stafford Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes. Okay. Do we have any matters for discussion, Mr. Murphy?
No, Madam Chair.
All right, then we're going to move forward to applicant number two. Forgive me if I butcher your name. Ezreal and Judy Scher, variant 3517. That's block 14001, lot 6, 239 Jackson Pines Road.
Good evening. If you would please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments they are about to present before the board represent the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you very much. If you would please state your name?
Ezreal Scher.
Spell your last name for me?
S-C-H-U-R.
And are you the homeowner?
I am.
Very good.
Okay. All right, Mr. Scher, why don't you tell us what you guys are trying to do with your property?
I have to ask. Because of my past cancer, I don't have hearing on my left, and the high ceilings are bouncing sounds all over. So I'm really having difficulty.
Okay. Okay, so we'll try to speak as loud as possible, and if you could as well, even if you have to yell, okay? If you could tell us what you're trying to do with the property?
Yes. First of all, I'm from Cleveland, born and raised. I was a very successful surgeon, and when whitewater rafting, I became paralyzed for two months, and it took me two years to learn to walk. The day I learned to walk, I got cancer of the brain and the spine. I've been in therapy since. But thank God I'm alive, and that's the miracle of life. I moved to Jackson because of my grandchildren are here, and Jackson had land, so I knew that I always go swimming in Cleveland for therapy, and I needed a therapy pool. That's what I'm trying to do. I'm trying to get a pool in that area.
And so the issue is that your property is zoned R3 now, and you don't have enough acreage, correct?
Right. I don't understand all that, you know, the zone 3 is on one. I just know that the only reason why I even contemplated doing this is because I had people who were in my exact same situation. But they were originally zone 1, they were zone 3, they got a setback, and they're exactly the same amount, so...
Can I ask you a question?
Please.
How large is your lot?
I can't hear you.
How large is your lot?
A little over an acre.
Okay.
Madam Chair, if I could, just a quick summary. The property is in the R1 zone, I'm sorry, the R3 zone. It's undersized for the R3 zone. And it doesn't meet the intent of the lot record standards, meaning it was never once R1. There are properties in the area that are Okay. Large enough for the R3 zone, but it's basically because the lot's too small for the R3 zone.
Very good. So...
So it was never R1?
Correct.
Okay. So I'm going to explain this to you, just so you understand it, all right? Many of the properties in the R3 zone, which is the zone where you're located, were previously R1, okay? When it changed to R3, a lot of record ordinance was adopted, and any lot that was previously R1 and now R3 had certain protections. But it only applied to lots that were previously zoned R1. I don't know why. This was quite a while ago, okay? What happened here is that you're in the R3 zone. You were never previously R1, so that means that your lot is undersized for the zone. Because you have an undersized lot for the zone, it means that you're probably not going to meet your setback requirements, because it requires 50 feet on each side. So you're here because you have an undersized lot and you're seeking to do, put an improvement on an undersized lot that you probably need variances for, all right? Well, we know you need variances for, that's why you're here. So that's why you're here, and maybe somebody else in the R3 zone didn't have to come, just so you understand that. It has to do with the way that the ordinances were written. That I can't speak to, though. All right, so just to clarify, the zoning officers indicated why you're here, so I guess we'll hear from the professionals at this point.
Mr. Peters?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Take no exception to anything that anyone said so far. I simply remind the board that if this gentleman came in, put a shed up. It's an undersized lot. So when you take the R3 dimensional setbacks and put them on an R1 lot, you don't end up with nothing, but you end up with a much smaller usable area for the principal structure, the house, an accessory structure, like a shed or a pool. So without testifying for the applicant, he has a hardship because he's a one-acre lot in a three-acre zone through no fault of his own, if that makes sense to you. Often when we hear undersized lot cases, we may say, did you go out and try to acquire property from other folks? So I'm not sure if that necessarily applies, because the pre-existing lot is non-conforming. So everything that's on the property is permitted because it was existing. The grand, what some people refer to as the grandfathering provision of the lot of record ordinance does not apply to this lot. So he's sort of out on an island, he's got a one-acre lot in a three-acre zone, and because of that, when he tries to build this pool, it doesn't meet the setback requirements for accessory structures for the R3 zone. Now, Mr. Scher certainly, in his opening comments, gave us part of his hardship proof. He has a medical condition that would tend for him to need some sort of exercise pool. To the extent that the board wants to discuss, well, if the setbacks for the accessory structure pool, if you use the R1 zone standards and you're sort of in keeping with that, is that the middle ground? Because applying the R3 standards for a pool, he doesn't meet the setbacks. Again, I don't want to sound like I'm testifying for the applicant, but I know he's familiar with his property, and I know he's seen our report. His property is approximately 120 feet wide. The side yard setbacks for accessory structures are 50 feet. So he could build a 20-foot-wide pool as of right. If this was the R1 zone, the standards would be less, and the pool may or may not comply, but they would be less than 50 feet. So to the extent that you want the applicant to provide you additional information about the need for the pool, the location of the pool, the size of the pool, but I think it was important that the board understand that he's a one-acre lot in a non-conforming three-acre zone. And I'm happy to answer any questions or try to elicit testimony from the applicant, if you'd like.
I would jump on, just from my perspective, I would jump on what Mr. Peters said, and I would tell you that based upon that alone, there's a statutory hardship, right, in terms of what we're dealing with in a C, with a C1 variance, right? And that's, is there an exceptional situation with regard to the property, right, itself? And here there is. He's in an R3 zone with a one-acre lot. That in and of itself is a hardship. He didn't create that hardship. It exists. So again, it sort of turns, and as Mr. Peters said, we can ask about the pool and things of that nature, but it sort of turns now toward the negative criteria. And we did hear the reason why the pool is necessary, so just keep that in mind. The board is free to ask any questions about the pool that it feels is necessary for the record, but I concur with everything Mr. Peters said.
Madam Chair?
I'm sorry.
No worries.
Mr. Scher, if you'd like to sit, you can sit and use that microphone. You don't have to stand there, sir. Yes, please.
I did want to take a minute. Mr. Peters mentioned something. This is just a learning moment for the board. We talk about undersized lot cases. That is not what this is. Undersized lot cases are governed by the Dahlmeier case. That's where the undersized lot is unimproved, and they're trying to improve that lot. Here we have an improved lot, a lot with improvements, that pre-exists the R3 zone. That's why it's different than what's required in the Dahlmeier case, all right? And that's something that you'll learn if you're not familiar with it, or I'll, or one of the professionals will point out. There's certain requirements under Dahlmeier that have to be met. That is not applicable here.
Thank you. Mr. Peters, you mentioned that because this is one acre, it could be helpful to, I guess, borrow the setbacks, setback requirements, just to kind of gauge what's reasonable for the size lot? Do you have the R1 setbacks for accessory structures handy?
Thank you, Ms. Parnas. We've been working together long enough now that I knew when I said that someone was going to ask me the question, so I apologize. I know Mr., I know our board attorney isn't a big fan of folks looking stuff up on their cell phones, but as opposed to having my computer out or bringing the code book with me, I have looked up online the R1 standards.
You're permitted, sir.
Thank you, Counselor. Don't want to get him a bad side of the attorney. The side yard setback for a residential swimming pool in the R1 zone is 20 feet.
Thank you.
And so it would appear that the applicant's proposal would meet those standards for comparison purposes.
Thank you. And Mr. Scher, could you explain? It seems like if you were, how, well, let me back up for a second. Do you know the dimensions of the pool that you're looking to put in?
20 by 40.
20 by 40? Did you consider having the width?
Sorry, I just, I want to make sure we're clear. The map we have shows a dimension of the area of the pool is 35 by 50.
That's with the cement surroundings. The pool itself is only...
No, I want to make sure that it's clear, because on this drawing, the surface of the water is 30 by 50, or 35 by 50.
The water is 20 by 40.
Perfect, thank you.
So are these drawings not?
Okay, what did, I'm sorry?
Are these drawings not indicative of what you're looking to put in?
I believe that they were.
Any comment from our professionals?
I'm reading the, personally, I'm reading it as 35 by 50.
Yeah, I agree. It's depicted on the plan as 35 by 50. And then, you know, if, if if it's going to be 20 by 40, I think you said, I think ultimately you'd have to, you'd have to provide a revised plan for the 20 by 40 pool to Jeff. Not here necessarily, but ultimately to close this out. But the variance relief would be less than what he's seeking now, if that were the case. It would be five foot more on each side, so the setbacks would be...
There must be a different plan, because I submitted a change when Dawn asked me to have it fixed. They sent in a second plan.
Okay. We'd never got the second plan. We have the one that shows 35 by 50. That's okay. I mean, you're looking at worst-case scenario here, but I'm saying for variance relief purposes, it would be, there'd be an additional, I'm assuming, five feet on each side beyond what's depicted on this plan, which would be even more conforming to the R1 standards.
Well, I think my question was, if the pool, it seems like the length of the pool is running to the width of the property, like...
We had to make it as close as possible to the steps of the retaining wall to my, to my door, so that I would have the minimum amount of stress.
Would there, would there be a way to, like, if you would rotate it and have the 20-foot width, would that...
I tried that. I tried that. It would be two problems. Number one, even like going to a plane, I need the wheelchair. I need help to go down the aisle. You're talking 40 feet. It may be simple, but it's not that simple.
No, but, right, okay, understood. Thank you for clarifying. That's all. Those are my questions.
I did a site visit, and the layout of the pool would not be practical for this gentleman's ability, if it were to be rotated for him to get to it. It just, it wouldn't make sense. It's the way it's, even though the dimensions may be off, but the layout is probably most suitable for his use.
I know you indicated you submitted a new plan to the zoning office. Can you just tomorrow contact Dawn and make sure that she has that, so that the professionals can have it? I'll make that a condition of the approval, that we get the updated plan. I'll make that a condition of the approval, that we get the updated plan. I didn't, I don't, I just checked. I didn't, I didn't get a copy, so I, I don't, I don't know if she has it or not, but I, I haven't seen it, and none of our professionals have seen it.
If I'm not mistaken, the outer border is the fencing of that pool, and the pool itself, the 20 by 40, you have 15, or 10 or 15 feet to the left side of the pool, which is closest to my stairs, and only five on the three sides of cement. So, the drawing is...
Yeah, Mr. Scher, the drawing scales correctly. If your engineer has an error on it, or somehow it got misconstrued, but that drawing that's on the board, the pool is 35 feet wide and 50 feet across your backyard. Scales correctly on that plan, and that's the information that's here. If you're going to make it smaller, that makes it easier for the board, because we can just take the numbers down. If you're going to make it closer to the setback, and you're going to need more relief, if you were to make it bigger, that would be a problem. So, I think the Chair has given you an out. Please make sure what it is you're looking for gets submitted to the board as soon as possible, understanding that your testimony is it's not a 35 by 50 pool, but instead a 20 by 40 pool.
I have one question for the applicant. Do you know where your, do you know where, over here? I'm sorry, right here. That's okay. I hear you. Do you know where your septic system is?
Yes.
Where is it?
If the top, let's say, is, is the top of the diagram north?
Yes.
Okay, so it's on the north side, towards the front of the house.
Okay. So, it's, it's forward of the house? Okay. Thank you.
I do just want to clarify for the record. The application itself that you submitted does indicate that you're looking for a 20 by 40 pool, which, again, consistent with your testimony this evening, and I'm not trying to belabor the point. The point is, is that the drawing that's up there does not show 20 by 40. So, make sure that you speak to your engineer or your professional to get that either revised or submit the new plan. That's, that's all. All right? But it, your application itself does request a 20 by 40 pool. I, I will say that.
And, Mr. Huda? Microphone.
The plan, it's indicated that there is a swing set. I don't think that conforms either. Does that have to be included in our variance?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
The plans indicate a swing set in the top of the property, and that certainly doesn't conform to any of the setbacks. Is that to be included in any variance that we would consider granting?
I, I would suggest that that would be the case. Mr. Scher, is that swing set that's shown on the plan, does that currently exist?
Say that again.
The swing set or the playset that's shown on the plan, does that currently exist on the property?
It's a temporary setting. We're going to move it in the back.
Okay. I just, do you know where you're going to put it? Technically, it's a structure, so technically, it requires a variance. So, while you're here, I wanted to get it, get it taken care of.
Okay.
All right. Do you know where you're going to put it on the property, approximately?
If you would move your arrow...
Don't forget to speak to the microphone.
If you would use your arrow, if, if top is north, we would go south as, behind the pool on the south side.
So, toward the rear of the property?
Near, near what?
Toward the rear of the property, you would go with that?
Towards the rear of the property.
Okay. So, we can say maybe no closer than...
No closer than 20 feet.
20 feet to the side yard property line? That would be acceptable?
Sure.
Beautiful. Okay, I'll incorporate that in the resolution, just so you don't...
Not a problem.
Just so you don't have an issue.
Do the Chair, while we're on the swing set, do you have a shed on the property?
A previous shed that was sitting there, yes.
And where is the shed located?
Actually, there is two sheds, and one of them, we're just going to take down, where the pool equipment is going to be. So, where you see the shed right now, that's coming down, and that's where the pool equipment's going to be, over to the right of the generator. The other thing was there, and that's towards the north, towards the front of the house, towards the east, that was sitting there.
Is that the one that's coming down?
No. The one that's coming down is the one where the pool equipment's going to come. It's an old wooden one, as opposed to a, a, you know, one of these lifetime plastic ones.
Okay. I, I would check to see if the shed also meets the shed that you're keeping. That may not meet the setbacks either, so I think you should look into that, too.
I would offer the same condition on that. If it's needed, I'll, I would offer the same condition. I would suggest no closer than 20 feet to any of the property lines for the shed. Oh, it, okay, then it's not even an issue.
Well, in the plans that he's going to resubmit, he needs to indicate that. If it can't be on the plan, and then the one that's in the setback should be indicated on the plan.
Correct. And no closer than 20 feet to the property line, I think would be inappropriate, again. If we're, if we're going to be guided by, again, we're not, we are not bound by the R1 zone requirements, but based upon the nature of the application, I think it's an appropriate benchmark here. You know, so that's why I'm saying 20 feet, because it's compliant, it, it would, it would be in compliance if this were in the R1 zone, which, you know, again, that would be, the size of the property is appropriate for the R1.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Is the generator at odds or an issue with being part of the clarification? Thank you.
Any additional questions, Mr. Martin?
Yes, I do have one. Just trying to address the revised plan, right, the revised plan. I want, just want to show you something on this one and ask you if you would change.
Mr. Martin, just yell as much as you can into the microphone.
Okay, can you hear me better now?
Yes.
Oh, okay, great. Just to show you a table that's on this plan, that I think will revise and make your case better, right? Because you seem a little hesitant about the, the submission of the revised plan. I want to make sure it's going to impact it. Do you mind if I pull over to the left, the table there? That says what the requirement is and how much you're, you're proposing, and how much variance you have? Yeah, oh, keep going. To the right, sorry, I got my left wrong. There's a little zone, keep going, keep going, down. There's a table right there that shows basically why you have a variance. Keep going down. There it is, right there, right? So, once you revise it, right, well, to the 20 by 40, you'll be closer to being in compliance, and that will help your case.
I can't hear you.
You can't hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I apologize. Anyway, I think we get the point, right, that, that's why. I just want to put on the record that those, the required won't change, but your proposal will change, and it will hopefully get better, and you'll be closer to being aligned to what the, the requirement is, once you change the plan.
The only thing that I understand that I have to change...
Yes.
Are the numbers, that it's the 35 overall with the fencing, as opposed to just the water. Once those numbers are understood, I mean, I'm telling you, it's a 20 by 40.
Yes.
But, and the third, the numbers that are there represent the cement around there and the fence.
Okay.
So, I'm hoping that we could get, get this thing in process, and just like I presented everything within days...
Yes.
...to Dawn, if there is something that needs to be changed, it'll be changed.
Okay, so, so just to be clear, on here, it says you're proposing the side setback to be 29.20 feet, by you changing the amount of water versus concrete. Will it change that total or not?
Yes.
Okay, great.
So...
So, that's going to help you.
Mr. Scher, your engineer, your engineer has to redraw this plan.
Correct.
It was drawn incorrectly.
But is that the only thing that has to be redrawn to be understood?
Well, I think, I think there's more, I think once your engineer draws the correct pool dimensions, you're going to see that your, your concrete needs to come, needs to shrink as well, right? Just make sure your engineer understands that you want a 20 by 40 pool, and make sure he also understands exactly how much concrete he wants around it, because right now, he drew it way too big. He drew it much bigger than what you want. Everything is much bigger, okay?
Okay.
And if he has any questions, he can call me or call Jeff.
Okay.
All right? And then the other thing, that you would need to take off the shed that's going to be removed, and you will need to take off the shed that's going to be removed, and then you'll have to show where the swing set will be once it's moved. And the other shed, the other shed is staying in place?
It's in there, yeah. Near the front of the house.
Right, okay, I would say the one shed was staying, but the one was being removed, so we have to show that removed, and then show where the swing set is going to be.
Okay.
Shouldn't the other shed also be included, so we know what the setback is for that?
Well, no, because it's going to be, one's going to be removed, and the one that's staying will be on there.
But he should make sure that it meets the setback.
No, right, no, no, that's what I'm saying. It will be on the, the, the one that's staying has to be on the plan. The one that's being removed has to be taken off. Oh, okay. So, the shed that's being removed will not show on the next, on the correct plan, but the shed that's remaining needs to be shown on the plan.
My job is to write what's called a resolution, so when all is said and done tonight, you're going to get in writing everything you need to do, okay? It's going to be approved, all right, by the board, whatever that, you know, assuming the variance is approved, once the resolution is approved by the board, you'll get a copy of that. It'll tell you everything you need to do for compliant, for resolution compliance, okay?
Any other questions to the applicant?
Just one question.
Dr. Hosking?
This would be to Mr. Murphy. What would be the reason for the board using R1 standards in an R3 zone? How, how do we get, get around that, since it wasn't an R1 zone at any time?
Again, you're not, we're not saying that the R1 zone standards are applicable to this property, because they're not. What, we're using them as a guide, because this, this is a, a, a one-acre lot, which is permitted in the R1 zone. So, we're trying to figure out what's permissible in terms of what we typically see with a, a, an R, a lot this size, right? And we're considering the fact that this hardship that exists with this property being in the R3 zone, subject to three acres, how do we, how do we get around, how do we get around the fact or, or that this hardship exists, and how do we make sure the standards that we're applying are going to be, you know, consistent with the standards in the township, right? So, we're not applying the R, we're, we're using them as a guide as to what's appropriate, but we're granting variance from the R3 zone standards. So, we're not using R1 standards. We're simply just using them as a guide.
As long as it's in the record while we're doing that.
Sure.
Any other questions for the applicant? Seeing that there's no other questions from the board, I'm going to open this to the public. Anyone wishing to come forward and make comment about the application and any testimony you've heard tonight, please do so at this time. Seeing no one come forward, I'm going to go ahead and close public session. Board, it's up to us for discussion and a possible motion. Comments, questions?
Just for the sake of the motion, I'm just going to list the, the conditions that we have. We're going to have a, a new drawing showing the proposed 20 by 40 pool with the appropriate drawing of the water, as well as the concrete surrounding it. We're going to permit the playset to remain on the property, no closer than 20 feet to any side property line. And the same will be said for the remaining shed, no closer than 20 feet to the property line, any side property line. And a new plan will be submitted showing the drawing of the pool, the concrete area, the placement of the shed, the removal of the shed to be removed, and the placement of the playset. Those are the conditions that we have listed here.
Comments, questions?
I'll make a motion to approve, which includes stipulations that Mr. Murphy is...
I will second that, reason being that the medical condition of the applicant is an exceptional reason to give him the approval.
I would just, if I could just add, the hardship of the lot itself being undersized for the zone, and there being no real other suitable way to place it in a way that conforms to the current setbacks of the R3 zone, just to add to the reasons.
We'll have rule call, please, Liz. We have a motion to second?
Mr. Hyman?
Yes.
Dr. Hofstein?
Yes.
Mr. Huda?
Yes.
Ms. Parnas?
Yes.
Ms. Rosal?
Yes.
Mr. Stafford Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Just, just for the purposes of the record, I know Mr. Hyman is losing his voice, so his vote was yes.
And Mr. Scher, the variance was granted, okay? And that's, and you'll get with the professionals and get the revised drawing, okay?
I appreciate it. Thank you so much for your patience.
We are going to move forward to applicant number three, Ave Partners LLC. They are here for preliminary and final site plan 918 with use variance 3497, block 2901, lots 7, 9, and 10, at 1,007 West Commodore Boulevard. Good evening, Mr. and Madam Chair, members of the board, board's professionals and public, Kenneth Pope of the firm Hilebrand Pope, on behalf of your applicant. Your applicant is Ave Partners LLC. This is an application that was partially heard by the board in June of this year and carried to this evening. This is an application for use variance relief and site plan, use variance, both variance and site plan approval, to permit the development of the property with two buildings, a 9,000-square-foot office building and a 4,000-square-foot maintenance building. The testimony that was presented at the meeting in June was through the engineer who presented the site plan, and there was testimony from John Ray, the traffic expert. When we left, there was a discussion between the applicant, the applicants, between the applicant and the board and the board's professionals with regard to one or two driveways, and there was, appeared to be a general sentiment of the board and the board's professionals that modifying the plan to include two driveways was the preference. Since we were last before you, our engineers contacted the county engineers, this is a county road, and secured a memorandum from the county engineers indicating that a two-driveway system was acceptable. It has to be designed to their standards, but it's acceptable. This evening, we would like to begin by presenting, reintroducing Mr. Intili, the design engineer. He is under oath, he is, his credentials have become part of the record, and ask that he present the plan to you. I've asked that he do three things. One is an executive summary of what we discussed back in June, just to refocus the board on the application. And two, to discuss with you the two driveways that were presented to the county and the county's position. And the third is that since we were last here, Mr. Intili...
And the third is that, since we were last here, Mr. Antilli has found a way to remove some of the bulk variances. And I've asked that he identify those two of you as bulk variance relief that will be removed. With your permission, Madam Chair, I'll ask that Mr. Antilli begin that direct presentation.
Madam Chair, if I may. Number one, Mr. Pape, I will re swear Mr. Antilli. His credentials will remain accepted, but that's regular practice of this board is to re swear the witnesses. Number two, I did want to place upon the record, we do have a formal objector here this evening, Paul Revere. Mr. Revere was previously represented by counsel and is no longer represented by counsel. There was some off the record discussion regarding Mr. Revere's request to cross examine your professionals at the time that they closed their testimony. It was something I had discussed with the chair. It was my legal opinion that that would be an appropriate measure to take based upon the request. I don't believe there was an objection from you. But I'll hear you if you wanted to make an objection to that. But my, my, my legal and procedural thinking on that particular issue is that Mr. Revere has the same rights as any counsel. And insofar as counsel would be permitted to cross examine your witnesses, so will Mr. Revere.
No objection to cross examination of our witnesses. That would be questions of the witnesses' testimony that is presented this evening. As long as that doesn't expand to being an introduction of case in chief, it would have to be reserved until the conclusion of the applicant's presentation.
That's correct. Of course, any cross examination, just like in a courtroom or any other hearing of this type, would be limited to what is placed upon the record this evening. That is appropriate procedurally and legally. And so, yes, that's correct. Obviously, I will hear any objection at the time of cross examination, if necessary. But I appreciate you not having a formal objection to that. And with that, I'll swear, Mr. Antilli, in. If you would please raise your hand. Thank you, sir. Again, your credentials have been accepted, so I'm just swearing you in for the purposes of the record. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony, information, questions, or comments that you're about to place upon the record, be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
If you would please just state your name and your affiliation.
Michael E. Antilli, and the project engineer, project manager on the site. I'm with Crest Engineering Associates, Tom Driver as a principal.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Antilli, you presented the plans to the board when we were here in, on June 19th. You had an overview and then went through considerable detail with regard to the elements of the site plan. I'm going to ask this evening if you could just take a few moments, just a few moments, to identify the property, its size, its zone, and the applicant's proposed development plans. Yes, we are 29.9 acres in overall size, located in the highway commercial zone on the south side of West Commodore Boulevard. We do have frontage on Route 195, the state highway to the south. We are surrounded essentially by highway commercial zone property and some development, some residential development to our, to our west on Lot 8 as a residential home and another one to our east, also on West Commodore Boulevard. There are residential properties across West Commodore Boulevard also. But the majority of properties are, of course, highway commercial and commercial zone. Jackson Outlets, for example, and Crossroads Realty, I believe, to the west. Could you just briefly describe the proposed development plan? Yes, we're proposing a 9,000 square foot, two-story office building and a 4,000 square foot maintenance building. That's one story. Part of the site plan development would be a 50-car parking lot, landscaping, lighting, of course. We're proposing a sand bottom infiltration basin, which meets the standards for NJDEP best management practices. I testified last time about the details of that, meaning water quality and water detention. We're proposing a septic field and a potable well, retaining well that runs along the western and southern property line, and a single driveway that will access the site for both the yard in the back, the contractor's yard, which is proposed, and the maintenance building, and as well the office building. There are a couple of statements that were made on the record that I would like to just have restated. The property is 28.94 acres in size, and you indicated that there's only a small portion of the property that is uplands and developable, and that you had used only that portion for the calculation of the development potential of the property. Take just a moment to restate that, please. Yes, I mentioned 29.9 acres, the overall surveyed size of the property. There was a 2016 LOI, there was an FHA application in 2010. There are easements filed, and most of the site is a conservation easement, which totals 26.2 of the 29.9 acres, leaving us about 20, 2.7 acres for development, and that's the portion that we're staying within. All the standards that you quoted, impervious coverage, building coverage, you didn't rely on that 29 acres, you relied on the 2.7 acres. We did. And I would also remind the board that when Esme Severino testified, she is one of the principals of the company, she indicated that the two-story office building was not 9,000 square feet, the second floor is intended to be their business offices, the second floor would be a rental space, and that the maintenance yard would be their maintenance yard and building, that they would not rent the maintenance yard to a third party. The maintenance yard and the maintenance building would be ancillary to their primary use, which was the office on the second floor. All, and those commitments were made by Ms. Severino and are binding on the applicant. If you could take us through the, I'm going to call it the second driveway design that was presented to the county, and you could place on the record the county's response to your office and to John Ray's office.
Before, before you do that, can I just ask a question? The maintenance itself, that's proposed only to take place in the maintenance building, from what I recall?
No activity outside of the building.
That's, I just wanted to get that, I recall that, I just wanted to make sure that I got that back on the record.
No activity outside of the building.
Thank you.
And if we could put up the second egress plan, titled Second Egress in the Title Block, it's a rendering. It shows the two driveways. That's it, thank you. So this is the conceptual two driveway plan, driveway, one on the west side and east here. This obviously separates all of the truck traffic to the rear maintenance area and yard in the back, keeping the office traffic and parking area completely separate. This was submitted to the county. We were obviously interested in their comments. Before tonight's meeting, we did get the result of those comments, which was that the county is okay with that second entrance. Should this go farther with this entrance, we'll go ahead and submit to the county a formal approval for that. Describe the, the, the two driveway system and the circulation that would follow from the two driveway system as presented. So to the yard area on the western driveway would be the construction vehicle traffic coming in, for maintenance at the maintenance building here, the yellow building to the, to the east. This is paved area, porous pavement area in the back, the entrance for any office activity. Tenants such as office tenant would be in this parking lot here, and there's no access from that area into the construction driveway area. So they're completely separate. There are three parking spaces in the back for the maintenance, and there are 47 spaces, total of 50, in the, in the male office area. And is it your calculation that that parking arrangement meets the ordinance requirements for both buildings? Yes, it does. I also indicated that there were some variances that you found a way to remove from the plan. Could you take a moment to describe the variances that are removed? Yes, we removed the variance, which is 20 feet required from the right of way to the parking. We had 19 on the plan, we'll make that 20 feet, so that variance will be removed. The sign had three variances, two of which will remain. One is area, 30 square feet is allowed, we're proposing 34 square feet for the monument sign, and we only have the one sign. The height of the sign maximum is six feet, we're proposing eight feet of sign for that monument sign, because we want to landscape the base of that sign, therefore the extra two feet. And the setback was the third, which is 30 feet required, currently showing 24.6 feet to our sign, which is located in this area here, but we will conform to the 30 feet, so that variance will also go away. The, the last meeting, you indicated that you had received staff reports and that you could comply with the technical requirements that were brought to our attention by the, both the planner and the engineer. If you could restate that the technical requirements that appear in their reports can and will be met by your office if this board grants the approval as requested. Yes, I, I have two board professional reports. EDH Engineering, June 16, '24. We can comply with all requirements in that letter, in that review. And then we have two from RVE, one June 11th, the latest being August 26, '24, and we will comply with the comments in that letter as well. Madam Chair, I have nothing further on direct of Mr. Antilli. He is available to the board, board's professionals, and as directed for cross examination.
For the chair? So just to, just to clarify, this, this is an exhibit plan you're presenting tonight. You haven't fully re-engineered the drawings for this concept, correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. I'm sure while you were developing this concept plan, though, you were, you were going through the mental exercise in your head as far as can the property be adequately fully engineered to meet stormwater management requirements, traffic requirements, lighting, landscaping, and so on. I mean, you're not, as a result of this revised plan, you're not asking for any additional waivers from ordinance development standards, correct?
We are not, that's correct.
Okay.
Every, every aspect of the elements that you measured, mentioned with regard to engineering of the site, by the addition of the second entrance would not substantially change anything, and no variances would be required as a result of that.
Okay. And then I want to, I want to just step through some of the prior approvals that were in place for the, for, for development activities on this site. You talked about a letter of interpretation from the DEP that was dated in 2006, therefore would have expired, actually, there were permit extension acts that came into play, but let's just say it has expired up to this point.
And also, the requirement of recordings that followed from that permit were, were filed on the property.
Correct, so, right, the LOI, well, I'm sorry, I mean, that's actually twofold, though, because the LOI didn't require any conservation easements. The LOI just indicated what the wetlands buffers should be, right? It just classified the buff, it classified the wetlands. The applicant further went ahead and submitted for a flood hazard area verification, an individual permit for wetlands, a general permit, actually, a couple different general permits, and a transition area averaging plan. One of the conditions of all of those DEP freshwater wetlands permits was to record the environmentally sensitive areas into a conservation. That was one of the conditions. There were other conditions that needed to be satisfied as well. Some of those conditions are specific to land development activities, and my understanding is, well, actually, Mike, I want you to, I want to, I want you to confirm if any of the regulated activities had been completed as part of that permit. And for instance, has the transition area, has the wetlands buffering been modified, right, as per the TAA plan approval?
Our plan of development started with the conservation easements filed as the base for the development of the remainder of the site.
Okay.
We're not proposing any changes to the filed easements and buffers.
Okay, but I want to, I understand you're not proposing any changes, but the language within the, within the regulations is this. If permit, if the permatee does not conduct regulated activities before the TAA waiver expires, right, so development activities, the following apply with regard to the transition area. If no activities have been conducted, regardless of whether or not a conservation restriction was recorded, the permatee shall obtain a new TA waiver to conduct regulated activities in the transition area. So that's right from the flood hazard area regulations. So just the fact that you've recorded something doesn't lock you in perpetuity, right, forever. There is still a trigger that says, yes, you were required to do the recording of the conservation easement, but because you did not do any site activities, there is still an expiration date attached with that transition area averaging plan.
Mr. Hill, the best answer I can give you is an honest answer. I'm going to have to consult with the environmental consultant who, and the DEP. It was our understanding that the, the requirements of all of those permits, individual permit, general permit, and the transition waiver, all were vested when the easement was recorded. I'll confirm.
Yeah, I'd double check that. I, I did, I've run into a similar scenario probably about eight to 10 years ago as, as a developer's engineer, and there was, there, some of the permits, those that are non-developmental permits, remained in effect as a result of the, the recording of the easement. However, those that are triggered by land disturbance have an, have a date that expires, still has a date that expires and is not grandfathered by any conservation easement. So just, I, I think at a minimum, what we would have wanted to see is either, either a statement in writing from the DEP that your permits, all of your permits remain valid, right? Or, or obtaining the necessary permits to make sure that what you're proposing, right?
This would be, this is the response. Any action that this board takes is conditioned on the applicant demonstrating that all outside agency approvals and permits are in place and are valid. We accept that. It's our understanding that all of these permits did vest. We have no issue at all going to the DEP with that inquiry. If they have, and if they have not vested, then we have an obligation to pursue the replacement for them. But what we're very comfortable staying, telling the board, is that the environmental constraints on this property are known, and they have been respected.
Right, I'm not worried about, I'm more concerned about the validity of the transition area waiver plan right now, and the plans and the other GPs and IPs that went along with that plan. Because really, you've reconfigured the design within the unregulated areas, but that doesn't, it's my understanding that won't absolve you from having to go back and obtain modified or additional permits for this plan. So, just so we're clear.
No, very clear. And, and my statement, the second time, the same statement, but we know that every outside agency approval, county soil conservation, every outside agency approval is an approval that would be a contingency imposed by this board on the applicant. We believe that we have, have them all. If we don't, we have an obligation to have them. If the board acts in the affirmative, we will pursue each and every one of those. And in fact, I would offer to the board, there might be a way to build in a stepping stone, or amend our application to be use variance and preliminary, and agree that we would not pursue, even pursue final until those issues are resolved. So there's a. Mr. Pape? Build a stepping stone.
You read my mind. Thank you, sir.
I'm going to stop there.
I would appreciate that.
I'll just stop there, I'm not going to read the rest.
Don't, don't read the rest of my mind, yes, that's correct. Thank you for the amendment.
Thank you for your clarification.
Just to, just to piggyback, the applicant has formally amended his application to seek preliminary site plan approval only, meaning that they will have to come back for final site plan. I think that's appropriate based upon the fact that now we're looking at a concept plan anyway. It was going to be a suggestion of mine, but it's been offered by the applicant, and I think that's, that's, that's very appropriate in this particular case. If anybody has questions about that, I'm happy to address it, but that is permissible. has questions about that, I'm happy to address it, but that is permissible.
Mr. Antilli, Mr. Pape, given the change to the two entrances, because when you were here before, it was, you know, there was discussion of one, two, how does that affect emergency vehicles? Wide enough, big enough?
The, yeah, the driveways, both driveways are designed per standards to meet emergency vehicle egress and ingress. We have a circulation plan as part of the set that shows a firetruck, particularly in the back area, turning and getting out. Standard design for all of the entrance aisles, the parking aisle, the curb radii and such are meeting the standards for emergency vehicle access.
And you mentioned fire trucks. I could have missed it, so forgive me. I didn't notice any fire hydrants or anything like that. Do we have that on site? What's the plan for?
Yeah, there's no water, so there's a potable well, so that's what we would be applying for with the county.
You mentioned a potable well. You're talking about putting a cistern in for fire protection?
That might be part of the requirement, possibly. We'd have to see when we make the application.
The architect, we have a 9,000 square foot building and a 4,000 square foot building, and he'll go through with the board what the requirements are for suppression.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Antilli? Being that there's no other comments or questions from the board for Mr. Antilli, Mr. Revere?
First of all, I want to thank everybody for volunteering their time.
Just remember to speak loudly.
I'll need a handout.
Thank you.
First of all, I want to thank everybody for volunteering their time. I know, you know, it's a lot of time, and you're giving up other things. I want to provide my briefing to the zoning board. Okay?
Morgan on it.
Can I come up here now?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna swear you in.
Huh?
I'm gonna swear you in.
I'm sorry, I have a hearing problem.
I'm going to swear you in.
I'm sorry?
I'm going, I'm going to put you under oath.
We have to swear you in.
Oh, okay. So can we do that from here?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you for raising your hand. Do you solemnly swear from the testimony, information, questions, or comments? Are you about to present before the board or represent the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Very good. Please state your name for the record.
All right, can I give this to the?
Please state your name for the record.
My name is Paul Revere.
Beautiful, and you're?
I live at 1009, right next to the site.
Thank you, sir. Okay. You're being sworn in. Now, you have a handout, is that correct?
Yes.
Has counsel seen that handout?
No.
You need to provide it to counsel first?
It's my understanding that at this moment, Mr. Revere can cross-examine this witness on his testimony. His case in chief is coming later.
That is correct. This is cross-examination only.
Yes. But I want this to be part of the record.
The time that he is putting in his case in chief.
And they told me I could only give it to you at this meeting, and I have it also on.
So I explained the procedural aspect of this case via email. What happens is the applicant is in the middle of its case in chief. That can be part of the record, but you're not here to submit evidence at the moment. Your case in chief comes once the applicant closes. Then you'll be able to put your evidence on. You're solely limited to cross-examination right now of the applicant's witness.
Okay, now can I also?
So that, that can come in, presuming, we'll talk about it later, but that's evidence that you're producing in relation to your case, not to cross-examine the engineer.
All right.
Okay?
But can I also cross-examine the attorney?
No, you may not. He's not a witness.
Okay. I have a lot of, so what do you want me to do with this? Not give it to anybody, or what?
I can't, I can't provide, I represent the board. I can't provide you legal advice.
Okay.
What I can tell you is that
I'm saying from the zoning board side. I'm not asking you for legal advice. Can the zoning board accept us now?
No, not now, during your case in chief.
All right. Okay, so can we have page one of my slide up on the board?
No, it says examination of Mr. Antilli.
Yeah, I think, I think, hold on.
No, it has to do with this man's design, so I need to be able to show you what I'm talking about. Okay, he's presenting a site plan for an industrial construction yard, and he has not shown you any of the type of equipment, there's nothing listed, that will be going in there. So I need to show the zoning board
That's the point.
The type of equipment that's going to be going in there.
He, and I, I understand what you're telling me. What I'm telling you is that's procedurally inappropriate. That would be, that would be for your case in chief. That is not cross-examination of the testimony that Mr. Antilli just gave, which is what you're limited to upon cross-examination.
Well, he has a drawing up there that has driveways.
And you can ask him about those drawings.
Okay, yeah, and we don't know what kind of vehicles are going to use those driveways.
You can ask him that.
Okay. All right, well, that'd be my first question. What type of vehicles are going to be entering those driveways?
I'm not going to object to Mr. Antilli testifying, but the use of the driveways was testified at the last meeting by Esme Severino. She went through the types of vehicles that would be on the property. She placed it on the record, and she also quantified them.
Is that PM Construction?
Hold on.
I'm sorry.
I run this hearing. You understand that?
Okay.
Okay. The chairwoman runs this hearing. I speak for the chairwoman, okay? What's going to happen here, okay, is he's going to put his objection on the record, okay? I'm going to hear your response to the objection directed to me, and then I'm going to make a determination as to that objection. That's how this works, okay?
Okay.
Mr. Pape, would you like to finish your objection?
Only that the testimony that you have here is the engineer's design, and the question that he was asked with regard to movements was fire vehicles, and he indicated that there's a turning template as part of the set. The testimony as to the vehicles that would be entering the property was placed at the last hearing by Ms. Severino, not by Mr. Antilli.
Okay. Mr. Revere, do you have a response to that?
Well, we can't, we can't talk about the type of vehicles that are going to go in there?
It's not a response?
I'm sorry?
That was a question directed to me. Do you have a response to the objection made by Mr. Pape?
I don't agree with it. I think the zoning board has got to know what kind of vehicles are going in there.
So we heard?
Yeah. I mean, how can you make a decision if you don't even know what kind of vehicles are going to go in there?
So I will, I will note, Mr. Revere, that was placed upon the record at the last hearing. However, I will allow you leeway to ask the question. I'm going to overrule the objection. Mr. Antilli, if you know, can you tell the board what type of vehicles, to your knowledge, will be entering the driveways?
Yes, to my knowledge, since it's a contractor's yard, you'll have the typical contractor equipment, backhoes, rollers, excavators, dumpsters, excuse me, dump trucks, and dozers and things of that nature.
Okay, now, how long are some of these tractor trailers? A tractor trailer that is trailing a tract excavator, how long is that rig?
They can vary in length. There's different sized trailers, my understanding. I'm not in the business, but I can tell you, I know that I've seen many different sizes.
How many feet?
Could go up to 50 or 60 feet.
60 feet, okay.
Sure.
Now, what's the turning path for a 60 feet foot vehicle going in and going out?
The, we would have to be given the turning radii for each piece of equipment, but generally speaking, they're articulated. When you have a dump truck, for example, pulling a trailer, maybe with a dozer on it, and we would have to look at that specifically.
Okay, so how wide is this road?
30 feet.
30 feet?
Yeah.
Okay, so, my research and my traffic guy says it takes at least 40 feet turning path to make a left turn. So that takes the vehicle off the road to make a left turn. So I don't know how this design could be even possible, when you have a 60-foot machine, you know, making a left turn, and it takes it 40 to 50 feet, the turning path. And did you consider that when you, when you?
The site is designed and considered for firetruck access. It is a contractor's yard, so there will be obviously equipment I mentioned moving in and out of the yard, some possibly on trailers. And as far as what would work in there and what would not, it would be the owner's obligation to be sure that the vehicle can come in and out of the site. We don't have specific information on it.
Well, my question is, how can you design this if you don't know what the turning paths of the vehicles are?
We do know what the turning path of the firetruck is.
Okay, what's the turning path for 60 foot?
Hold on one second.
40 feet?
Hold on. You're going to ask him a question, right? You're going to give him the courtesy of allowing him to finish his answer before you ask the next question.
Well, let me tell you something. It's very stressful to be up here.
I understand that.
All right?
I've been there.
I'm just a Joe Schmo neighbor, trying to defend my property, and the stress is pretty bad, so I'll tone it down.
Just common courtesy, please.
It's very stressful, I'll tell you the truth. Okay, so on this drawing here, you don't show my house or the driveway. Doesn't that something you should show the zoning board, so they can know the full picture of this site plan?
This is a concept plan only. The engineering plans submitted to the board do show your house, sir.
Well, it doesn't show, it does not show the driveway. Doesn't the zoning board need to see that to make an informed decision?
The elements around the site or on the site plan that have been submitted.
Well, I'm saying that my driveway runs this way, okay? Now, let's talk about the site plan. I mean, the site triangle. Does the site triangle for this site plan extend over to my property?
The site triangle ends currently, as you can see, at your property line.
That's not true. If you look at your survey, it goes over my driveway. If you look at your survey map, it goes right over my driveway.
If I might say, the site triangles, if I might say, site triangles are the purview of Ocean County Planning Board and Engineering Review. When we make that formal application, which shows either the two driveway entrances, as you see here, or a single, they will vet that site triangle and surely make us provide the site triangles necessary.
Well, I'm not giving you any footage. I'll just tell you right now, but why would we go into it knowing that your site triangle is on my property? Why would we proceed?
We, there are many sites and many properties developed where the site triangle cannot continue on the property. It's then up to the county, in this case, to direct the applicant as to how to proceed with that situation.
Now, the last time we were here, one of the planning board members asked me if I wanted to have 60-foot trucks 40 feet from my house, my back deck, and we said, no. Who would want a 60-foot truck, you know, we're on the back deck, you know, 6 o'clock in the morning to 6 o'clock at night, spewing diesel fuel and making all kinds of noises, want that to be like 40 or 50 feet from their back deck? Did you consider me when you designed that truck route?
We provide mitigation for the things you're talking about as best we can with landscaping, a retaining wall, a fence, things of that nature.
Well, I can tell you, how many, it's only like 40 feet from my house, all right?
As the board recall, we had the discussion, there was a suggestion that by some, that the driveway for the trucks be on the opposite side, and your professionals and other members of the board indicated that it should be on this side. So we went home knowing that you wanted two driveways, and we went home with two sets of guidance. We followed the guidance that Mr. Hill had placed, and we thought the majority of the board members. It could be reversed, but we think that what you're seeing is the right way for it to be designed, and Mr. Hill placed on the record wide.
Okay, now, can I ask?
For the Chair? No, you can't. I'm going to, everybody, hold on. I'm going to turn to our engineer, who will address the comments regarding the driveway situation. Please.
I don't, I mean, just to clarify, I don't believe it was any one of our personal opinions. I believe we were in a question and answer, we were questioning your son who was here at the time, right, representing you or working with you, and it was his opinion that he would rather see the truck driveway closer to your home. If we were to split them up, he would, hold on. Sir.
Okay, I can shake my head. I'm not saying anything.
Sir.
Okay.
We had specifically asked what his opinion was at that time. You can go back and watch the videos online, okay?
I did, I did.
And my recollection, my recollection was that his preference was, he would rather see the truck traffic, because there'd be less truck traffic on a given day, versus the vehicle traffic. That's my recollection, okay?
I concur with that.
Can I?
That is incorrect. I have it on YouTube, and I transcribed it, okay? It specifically said cars. So that's easy to fix, because it's right on YouTube.
Could I make a comment? I believe this, if I remember correctly, I was the one who asked if we could get input from the neighbor. The professional advice originally was, if I remember correctly, the reverse. I didn't, I don't have the YouTube transcript, but I have a pretty clear recollection. And there was conversation about, you know, what would be the preference, and I said, is it acceptable if we ask the neighbor? They're the ones who were trying to consider. Can we ask for their input? And the input very clearly was contrary to what the original professional advice from our engineer was. And this, and it was bigger trucks, but less frequent, was the, like, I asked the question, I so clearly remember this exact.
And I will piggyback on that. His son, Mr. Revere's son spoke up and said he would prefer the truck traffic for the very reason that both of you have stated, because there would be less traffic.
There would be less trip generation.
I have to disagree with, we have a misunderstanding. It's on the YouTube. We said, who would want huge trucks? First of all, that's another issue about how many trucks are going up there. One a day is a very minimum, okay? One a day. They're not building a huge maintenance garage, a fuel facility, which has still not been taught.
Okay, well, so, again, there's, this is a legal hearing.
Okay, so?
There has to be adherence to procedure. I'm not trying to be rude. I'm doing my job. There must be adherence to procedure. You will have your opportunity to make your case in chief. No one is denying you that right. Right now, all we're here to do is cross-examine the engineer based upon the testimony that he gave this evening. I've allowed leeway as to the turning radius of the trucks and what type of trucks and things of that nature, but I'm not, we're not here to listen to argument at the moment.
Okay.
Okay? Again, I'm going to direct this question to the applicant. My recollection, okay, I'm going to start with a statement. My recollection is the same as Mr. Hill's and the same as the board members. My recollection is the fact that the trip generation from the trucks was testified to be much less than the trip generation generated by the office use, okay? We're hearing tonight that the applicant would prefer the driveways be reversed. Is that something that you could engineer as part of the final, or would that, would that be possible? Again, I'm not, I'm trying to get it as sense of what you guys, you know, can do with the engineering on the site. That's sort of where we're at.
Yeah, we, the site has its challenges, obviously, but yes, we can certainly take a look at that, moving that truck traffic driveway to the east side.
Okay, well, we might as well just say that's a misunderstanding, and I can go back and get the transcript, but it doesn't matter. Can I put it on record now? I don't want I don't want trucks in that area, so I just want to be clear on that. And the idea that it's only one a day is ludicrous, okay?
Respectfully, I just clarified that on the record. You heard the applicant's engineer testify that they would look to move the driveway for the trucks to the other side, and that the car generation would be moved to the, to the side that's purported to be for trucks at the moment. That, that's what the engineer just testified to.
I didn't hear that well. Can you come up here and help me?
You say, like, you're asking them about switching the driveway, you put it on the record that that's what they want, that's what you want.
Yes, okay, good. All right.
Thank you.
Do you have any further questions?
Thank you for your help. So, now, this is a Class D use variance. This is an industrial use in a highway, commercial, residential.
Excuse me?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna overrule, I'm gonna overrule that question. The engineer didn't make any testimony as to the variance criteria that's necessary, nor received the appropriate witness to address that.
Bonnie, you gotta come up here. Yeah, I'm having a...
That's not an appropriate question for the...
Okay, all right. And I'm not allowed to ask the attorney any questions, just for the record, right?
No, you're only questioning Mr. Antilli about what he testified to tonight.
Okay.
Just cross-examine.
Yes, I, I got that part. Okay, now, let's talk about the LOI. Have you applied for an LOI? I contacted New Jersey DEP, and I'm talking to Mr. Dench, I have his email. It's fairly clear. He said that all the permits, all the conservation easements, and whatever deed restrictions you have are not valid, and no longer good, and not to be used. Now, he also said that he has, you have to go back to the New Jersey DEP and apply for all this stuff, just like it was brand new. Is, have you talked to New Jersey DEP about the letter, the wetlands delineation?
We haven't.
I'm asking the, can I ask the expert, please?
You, you did. Again, this is procedure, sir.
It's a yes or no.
He is permitted to object to the question. This is a legal hearing. Mr. Pape is the attorney for the applicant.
Oh, he's objecting.
If he wishes to object...
Okay, Bonnie, you better come up here.
He can do so.
Yeah.
Mr., this is, this is a court hearing, essentially. A question was asked by Mr. Revere. Mr. Pape has an objection before that, has an objection to place upon the record. He started to talk before the question was answered. This is appropriate procedure, Mr. Pape is allowed to object to the question, and I will hear his objection.
The question with regard to the status of the DEP permits was placed on the record a few moments ago by Mr. Hill, and I responded on behalf of the applicant, indicating we had not gone back to the DEP, that it was our understanding that our DEP approvals remain valid, but that we would go back to the DEP and we would inquire, and if they were required to be replaced, they would become a condition of approval. That was my statements made to the board.
Mr. Pape, would it be a fair representation if I placed upon the record that it is the, it is the norm, in fact, that every single application that comes before this board is subject to outside agency approvals, such as the NJDEP?
Yes, and as a matter of fact, since 1972, there's Supreme Court decision that says this is the board of first impression, and all other approvals are conditions.
And, and if I understand the applicant's representations correctly, not only have you agreed to go back to the NJDEP previously, you've also agreed to apply only for preliminary site plan approval this evening, is that correct?
That is correct, and that we will not return for final without all the DEP permits in hand.
Your objection is sustained.
Okay, now, I have a question for Mr. Hill. You're Mr. Hill, right? Okay, back about a year ago, maybe a year or two years ago, the Jackson Township wrote Donna Jennings a letter and cited Jackson New Jersey Code, Article 244 to 245, C1A, saying that her application was not complete, because it says, "All applications for a major site plan or major subdivision approvals shall be required to submit a valid New Jersey DEP letter of interpretation or permit before the application can be deemed complete." Has anything changed from that time period?
I, I'm not familiar with what you're talking about, but...
I'm, I'm gonna object to the question.
I really, I really don't understand what the question is, to be honest with you.
Well, the question is...
There's a checklist require...
Are we applying this code against this application like we did against, uh...
There's a check...
Mrs. Jennings?
There's a checklist requirement at the time of submission that proof of submission to outside agencies must be made, not that an LOI has to be in hand.
Okay, well, they, your lawyers, the Jackson lawyers cited this law, okay?
There is no law.
Huh?
There is no law, I'm telling you, I'm telling you what the, I'm telling you what the Jackson checklist requirements are for, for plant submissions.
Okay.
Sir, with all, with all due respect, you're bringing up points that just aren't adding any value to your argument here.
I, I...
So, I think, all right, you're just not, you're pulling, you're just pulling things out of thin air, and you're pulling acronyms out of thin air. They're not adding any val...
Now, this comes from case law.
Let me, let me be very clear.
Okay.
Enough. Everybody enough, okay? Let me be, I'm gonna object to that question, because I represent this board. There is no law that says he has to have an LOI before he comes to this board. The Supreme Court has said that the zoning board, the planning board, the land use boards, they are boards of first impression. Every single resolution that this board writes includes a provision that says the approval is subject to all necessary outside agency approvals, including the NJDEP. It is not law that you have an LOI before you come to a board.
Okay.
It is not in the ordinances that you have an LOI before you come to this board. What is in the ordinances is that you have submitted the approval for the approvals required. Now, this application is different, because they did have a, an LOI, and they did have approvals. Now, whether they're valid or not, that's a question that remains to be seen. However, it's been addressed. The applicant has indicated, not only will they reapply for everything that they need, if that's the case, but they're gonna come back before this board with, for final site plan approval, if they're approved for preliminary. They'll come back for final, and at the time, they will have their valid approvals from the NJDEP. So, that, from, from the perspective of this board, from a legal perspective, and that is more than satisfactory. In fact, that's more than what's required.
Mr. Murphy, this hearing is going off the rails.
I agree with you.
This testimony that we're hearing from you, sir, is supposed to be directed to this gentleman.
Okay.
Of only about the testimony that he has provided thus far. And, and we are really going off here and, and not following the proper...
I have put that on the record numerous times. I have allowed significant leeway here, but I too am running out of patience, and that's, that's tough to do for me. So, you have to abide by the procedure. If you have no more questions for Mr. Antilli, Mr. Pape will call his next witness.
No, I do have a lot more questions, okay?
Well, if they're not relevant...
To him, to him, yes, I'm following...
...the testimony that he has provided.
Correct.
Okay, you don't want to overly limit me, so I can't get the zoning board good information.
We're not, excuse me, we're not trying to limit you. You are an objector. As an objector, we are following procedure. Mr. Murphy has clearly stated that what you are to, what you are allowed to question this evening is anything that was testified to tonight, not last time, tonight, on what was only spoken about, Mr. Antilli. My Mr. Antilli, excuse me.
Mr. Revere, I'm gonna address that, because that, that ticked me off a little bit.
Okay, can I ask?
I'm gonna be very, I'm gonna be very, no, no, no. I'm gonna be very clear with you. Here's what happened, okay? I have allowed you significant leeway in terms of what's going on here. No one's limited you. I've allowed you significant leeway. You understand that? Okay? From a procedural perspective, you're well beyond what you should be doing up there. Okay? So, if you're not going to ask Mr. Antilli any more questions, you can sit down.
I will ask him more questions.
But if you have questions for Mr. Antilli about what, excuse me.
All right, I understand.
Help me out. I want to make sure you understand, because I feel like I'm having the same conversation again and again. Here's what's gonna happen. You're gonna ask Mr. Antilli questions about what he testified to tonight. If they're unrelated, I will object. I, I can't, I can't, I, there's no way that this can keep going on all night. You may cross-examine Mr. Antilli, that is, that is the limit of what's gonna happen from here on out.
Can I cross the exam, the engineer on the, on the drawing that he has up there?
You've asked me that question before, and I've replied in the affirmative, and I will do so again. You may question the engineer about the drawing that he has on the board.
Yes. Okay, so, this fuel facility, I couldn't find anywhere you, where you provided any detail or specifications. Can you provide us, is, did I miss something, or have you provided, how, you know, any detailed specifications and drawings for the fuel facility?
The purpose of the site plan is to show the location and extent of that fuel tank. And that's what we have done. And you could see the fuel tank right on that site, it's a rectangular structure right there, it's white, sitting on the porous pavement.
All right, so, we have a box, I just want to clarify, we have a box that you call a fuel facility, but we don't have any more information on it.
There was information submitted, as I understand, by the applicant, under the operation statement and listed site's equipment and the operation and the hours and such.
Okay, so how many gallons?
There's a fuel tank that's proposed for the back of that site.
Okay. How many gallons is it, is it, is it?
Sir, that was all testified to last time, if I remember correctly. Mr. Pape, you can correct me, if I remember correctly, the fuel tank was talked about a little bit more specifically last time. Mr. Antilli did not discuss that this evening. Yes, it's on the drawing, but as far as capacity and things like that, that was not discussed.
Since the last meeting, and I would not correct you, Madam Chair, but since the last meeting, we have had numerous meetings with our client and our team, and a little bit later in the evening, I was going to place on the record, our client has elected to remove the fueling facility. It is not a necessary element of their, their operation.
Fantastic.
It was going to be over-the-road diesel, not to, not to fuel any of the equipment, and they had, with close proximity to gas stations, they're comfortable removing it in its entirety.
So, the applicant is agreeing to remove the fueling station, is that correct? In its entirety. Thank you, Mr. Pape.
Okay. All right, so, how did you come up with one truck a day on the entry for that, that facility?
Operations testimony was by Esme Severino at the last meeting, not by Mr. Antilli.
Sustained.
Okay, now, have you submitted an environmental impacts study for this site?
Asked and answered. Please move on.
What's that?
You've already talked about this.
You already talked about that.
Okay, is it possible for construction vehicles to decide to start parking in this area? I'm asking if it's possible.
You're asking if construction vehicles can access the office area?
And park, and use their parking.
Well, since the, the occupier of the second floor of the entire proposed 9,000-square-foot building controls the yard, they will not obviously allow that to happen. There, there's, there's one owner-operator, which will be the tenant of the second floor, the complete second floor of the building.
Okay, can I, all right. Now, this site plan, if it's approved, can it be sold to another operator?
There's no restriction on the transfer of property to a third party. What happens, though, is if this board grants approval, and it, the approval memorializes the commitment that's made, that the rear maintenance building would be ancillary to the primary use in the office building. Anyone who purchased the property would be bound to those same terms.
Okay, now, how many vehicles can be stored in this storage area?
I don't think Mr. Antilli testified to, to that. That was testimony that came from Ms. Severino when we were here last week.
Oh, we can't, we can't know the number?
No, that was not what Mr. Antilli discussed.
Well, I wasn't asking Ken, I was asking the engineer.
No.
Okay, now, when you have this drainage area, the vehicles themselves and the maintenance yard, they leak oil and, and solvents. Now, when it rains, those solvents get washed into the, the drainage basin. I didn't see anything in your application where you're filtering the, the pollutions, pollutants out of the water before it goes into the drainage basin.
For the best management practices, details for stormwater management, there are specific details about porous pavement construction, including the sub, construction of the sub-bass areas and the stone and the filtering. With regard to the roof areas, they're draining directly to the base, the underground storage portion, which is the portion near the refuse in the back. You don't see it on this plan.
Okay, so...
With regard to the, just to answer your question, the surface flow does go to the basin, there's a four bay, and then it travels to the infiltration basin, which has a sand bottom, and that meets the standards for stormwater management for best management practices.
And I do, I do believe you testified to that on the record this evening, correct?
I did.
Thank you.
Did you show your drainage calculations in your, in your, in your analysis?
Stormwater report for the site was submitted to the board, to the township, yes. Part of the checklist.
Okay, so, I can get a copy of that?
I suppose so.
All right.
Public record.
Okay, so, well, what would be the maximum use? If they sell this property to another operator and PM goes away, because PM is not the applicant, it's AVE Partners, okay? They own it, the property. What would be the maximum, what would be the maximum usage of this, this lot? No?
Whether they sell or not, he can't answer that question. He wouldn't know what the new owner, if there was a new owner, would even do. And that's not relative to his testimony for this evening.
Now, can whoever's there repair other equipment from other companies?
The main inch, the area is specifically for PM construction, and that's it.
All right, so that's, you're, you're saying that's, okay. Now, now, 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM, let's talk about that.
Was that his testimony?
No, Mr. Ant...
Yeah, I know, Bonnie, I know, okay. All right, can the applicant share the site with another construction company that may be renting one of the...
That's already been testified to, and the answer is no.
That was placed on the record at the last meeting.
Okay, now, I'm sorry, what was your first name?
Mike.
Mike, Mike, have you reviewed the PM construction website and other similar construction websites to figure?
Excuse me, that was not part of his testimony this evening.
Lawyer.
Would he be able to ask these questions?
Mr. Murphy?
I...
Because you know what, we're living next to this.
No, we understand, ma'am, but...
The question got cut off before I heard it.
I said, when would my...
No, no, not you. What was your question, sir?
No, she's asking when...
I understand that, but I didn't, you cut him, respectfully, the board cut off the question before I heard what Mr. Revere was asking, because this is getting a little out of hand. Mr. Revere, what was your question to Mr. Antilli? Mr. Revere, what was your question to Mr. Antilli?
My impression is that everything has been minimized. He's saying that only changing the tires and oil in one truck a day... A new owner can go in there and maximize that, and the zoning board needs to know that.
Excuse me. That was... Mr. Murphy asked you, what was your question? That was not your question.
Ryan, can I paraphrase a question?
Mr. Hill, go ahead.
I'm trying to remember now.
Okay, so I didn't see a description of what type of equipment is going to be maintained...
Mr. Revere.
No, the question... I'm sorry.
I asked you a question.
I'm sorry.
I would like an answer to the question.
Who is?
I asked you a question.
All right, I'll come closer.
Okay. Doing the best I can to speak into the mic.
Okay, I'm speaking to the mic.
My question to you is, what was your question about the... You started talking about a website, but the board cut you off.
What was that?
What?
Okay, go ahead.
You started talking to Mr. Antilli and asked him about a website. What was your... I didn't hear your question.
My question, did he review the PM Construction website and other excavation company websites and then base that to see what kind of equipment's going to go in there?
That is... He's not... He's never going to ask that question. Because it's not within the scope of Mr. Antilli's testimony.
Well, it's a part of his design here, okay?
What?
The whole design is a maintenance for industrial excavation.
Right, and he's the technical witness. He's not here to talk about the nature of the equipment. He designed the... He's testified that he designed the plan according to the specifications that he was provided by the applicant. That is his testimony. So whether or not he's reviewed a website is completely irrelevant.
Well, I'm just asking. He could have said yes or no. It's no big deal.
And I understand that, but he doesn't have to. That's the point. He doesn't have to answer the question.
Okay, Mike, did you consider any air pollution problems with this site?
I haven't provided any testimony about air pollution, so I don't think I can answer that for you.
Now, how about the noise level?
No, absolutely not.
Not allowed to do that.
That is not within the scope of this witness's testimony.
Okay, so I'm not... I can't...
Mr. Revere.
Yeah. I'm moving on.
This is a legal hearing.
Okay.
There is procedure. There are rules. Cross-examination is limited to the scope of the testimony provided. Period, end of story. Limit the questions to the testimony. He's not a noise expert. He has no idea.
Okay, where would I find the analysis of the noise and the air pollution and the dust and things like that? Where would I find that?
I think you should ask one of the really good answers to these questions.
Please. I'm asking a question. If he can tell me where I can find it, it would be helpful. Is he going to answer that question? Is that a legitimate question?
I don't even know how... I wouldn't even know how to answer the question. What's the question? You're asking where you can find information about what?
Noise pollution, vibrations, air quality.
Let me... Let me...
Those are things that are important with every site plan.
Mr. Antilli, can you represent that the applicant will comply with all state and local noise ordinances with respect to...
If you can... I'm just asking, where do I find it? That's all.
I'm asking Mr. Antilli a question in response to your question, because I don't think Mr. Antilli can answer that question, but I'm going to clarify it for you. Mr. Antilli, if you can, can you represent that the applicant will comply with all...
Yes.
...state and local noise ordinances, pollution ordinances, and the like?
I'll do my best. And yes, we would be obligated to conform to and comply with all regulatory noise or pollution ordinances as any applicant would.
All right, well, I want to... I just want to tell you about a little stressed out. So if it looks like I'm a little aggravated, excuse me. I know you're up there volunteering your time. I'm just trying to get to the information. Did you look at any of the negative impacts this site plan would have? I'm asking Mike. He can say yes or no, that this site plan would have to the neighborhood.
Again, we would be obligated to comply with the local ordinances or any other ordinances that are pertinent to the development of the site and what the use is that we're proposing on the site.
Well, the ordinance says it's highway commercial, so, you know... All right, well, I think I covered enough. I do want to say that I did contact DEP. I have an email, and they said all the DEP permits, LOIs, everything.
All right, that's all been discussed already.
Okay.
We're not going to revisit that topic. If you have no more questions for Mr. Antilli, Mr. Pape can call as...
All right, now, at the end of this, is my... Are you going to have a public hearing at the end of this? Because we have other people here who want to ask questions, okay?
We always open to the public. We always open to the public.
Okay, and my wife is going to want to do that also. Okay?
Well, we have more...
Now, at the public hearing, can I come back and make statements?
Sir...
Okay, thank you.
I'm going to put this on the...
I don't want to steal your mic.
I'm going to put this on the record one more time. This was discussed via email with Mr. Pape, myself, and Mr. Revere, as well as representatives from the zoning office. I'll make the record very clear. It was discussed... Not only was it discussed, it was discussed at length. I've advised of the procedural nature of this particular hearing, not only tonight, but also previously via email and writing. As indicated, Mr. Pape is in the middle of his case in chief. He's the applicant. He's permitted to finish his case in chief. I've allowed you to cross-examine his expert, limited to the scope of the testimony, as is permitted, as if you were counsel, as if you were an attorney. Once Mr. Pape is finished, you, as the objector, will have an opportunity to put on your case in chief, meaning that you can submit any evidence you would like. I even believe I asked you if you had any expert witnesses that you had anticipated providing testimony to support the positions that you've taken. I don't believe that to be the case here, but again, you're going to have an opportunity to say whatever you would like as the formal objector to this case once the applicant is finished. That is how the procedure works. Again, you will be permitted to cross-examine the witnesses as to the scope of their testimony once they finish their testimony. It will be limited to the scope of the testimony. The procedure is clear. It's been made clear in writing. It's been made clear on the record this evening. I can't stress that enough. I've given every opportunity for everyone to understand the procedure. You know, this is not a surprise. With that having been said, Mr. Pape, you may call your next witness.
The applicant's next witness is Steve Rodasti, the architect, who is responsible for the design of the buildings. If we could have Mr. Rodasti sworn, will share his credentials and go through his testimony.
Good evening, Mr. Rodasti. Thank you for raising your right hand. Do you solemnly swear affirm that testimony, information, questions, or comments that you're about to present before the board represent the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you very much. If you would please state your name, provide your affiliation, and your credentials.
Mr. Rodasti. I'm Principal of the President of the House of Representatives of the New Jersey State of New Jersey. I'm presented in front of dozens of boards throughout the state of New Jersey, designed hundreds of buildings throughout the state, designed in front of this...
Does board accept your credentials? So just remember to speak loudly into the microphone.
I'm going to ask you to make one more statement, just confirm that your license in the state of New Jersey is in good standing.
Yes, it is.
Thank you. I'm going to ask if you could identify to the board the exhibits that you would like to rely upon for your testimony, and then if you could take us through in a narrative fashion, the design of the buildings. Issues that I'd like you to address are the aesthetic elements of the outside of the building, the compatibility of the buildings, the utility of the buildings. And there was a specific question about fire suppression requirements. So if you could take us through the design of the building and what the fire suppression requirements are. Thank you.
Yes, so I have two drawings, and right now, I'd like, if we could, if we could bring up sheet SK1, its proposed office, and it's dated 7/15/24. Thank you. So there are two proposed new buildings at the site. The front building is a two-story, 9,000-square-foot office building, while the rear building is a one-story, 4,000-square-foot maintenance building. The office building is designed for anywhere to one to four different tenants, and our client would utilize the two office suites at the second floor. The first floor has three pairs of entry doors. The left and right doors would be utilized for the first-floor spaces, while the center door would enter into the main stair for the second-floor spaces. The second staircase at the rear of the building would provide the second means of ingress from the second floor. I designed this building to have a lot of flexibility for possible multiple tenants with many windows for a lot of natural light. The building will be ADA compliant and will comply with the current edition of the New Jersey Barrier-Free Subcode. The building will not have an elevator, but the New Jersey Barrier-Free Subcode does not require elevators in buildings under 10,000 square feet that are not used for government or health care facilities. Entrance stores, stairwells, toilet rooms, and other building elements will fully comply with the ADA. This building would have no retail use or medical office use. It'll be used only for general office use. The building would not be fire sprinkled, which is not required by code for a building of this size, but it will have fire alarms, fire extinguishers, smoke detectors, and carbon monoxide detectors. So I coordinated the design of the building with the landscape design to make the building and site to be as attractive as possible. The north elevation, the front of the building, was designed with many windows and other architectural elements to be architecturally interesting. I started with a faux-stone base with a water table that would visually anchor the building to the ground. The same stone would extend up around a bump out and an archway at the center of the building to accentuate the central doors. The arched ceiling above would provide protection from the rain for people using the doors, as well as providing an aesthetically interesting central arched window. Also with this north elevation are two pairs of double-glass entry doors with roofs supported by columns with stone bases. The main facade material would be a warm-colored earth-toned stucco or ephist finish. The symmetrical elevation would be broken up with black-framed aluminum windows with low-e glazing, as well as white trim, window casing, and freezeboards. The roof would be a hip roof with a deep-red, standing-seam metal finish. A hip roof was selected over a gable roof in order to visually keep down the scale of the building. The roof will be designed for added structural loading in order to support possible future solar panels. At the central gable of the roof would be a 12-inch-high, non-internally illuminated channel numbers denoting the street address, and below the street numerals would be the building-mounted sign. The sign would be non-internally illuminated and would be lighted with LED gooseneck fixtures. This sign would be three feet high and seven feet long for a total of 21 square feet. This sign would include no more than four colors, as per the ordinance. The same materials that are used for the design of the north elevation would also extend around all of the other three elevations, making them equally interesting as the front The monument sign at the northern corner of the site would be a new monument sign, and we are proposing a sign that would be eight feet tall and 5'8" wide that would match the colors and materials of the main building. It would have a faux-stone base and stucco finish and would support a 5' high by 5'8" internally illuminated LED sign box. That's 28.33 square feet. At the top corner of the sign would be 6-inch-high, non-illuminated address numerals, showing the street address of the property. The sign itself is two feet taller than is allowed by the sign ordinance. However, I thought that the extra height would be helpful for the aesthetics of the sign. The bottom two feet of the sign would be used for a stone base to match the base of the building. This would allow landscaping to be planted at the base of the sign without obscuring the sign box. This sign would include a maximum of four colors, and the tenant names would be of uniform in color and style. If we could bring up sheet SK2, this is the proposed maintenance building, and it also has the same date of 7/15/24. The maintenance building is located behind the main building. However, it was designed to be equally as attractive as the office building. It was designed to be an accessory used to the main building and will not be rented out as a separate use. The building would be a one-story block structure of 4,000 square feet with structural roof trusses. It was designed to match the main structure. It would have faux-stone with a water table at the base of the exterior walls to match the main building. The walls above the stone would be an earth-toned stucco. The roof would also have a standing-seam metal roof of the same pitch and style as the front building, and this building would have an overhead door and several man doors for loading of equipment and supplies. And high up on the exterior walls would be windows to allow natural light into the space while allowing the interior side of the walls to be free for storage. This building wouldn't have any signage.
Does that conclude your presentation of the designed buildings?
Yes, it does.
I have no further examination of Mr. Rodasti, and he is available to you, your professionals, and Mr. Revere.
Any questions or comments for the architect?
Is there any fire suppression in the maintenance building? Sprinklers?
There would not be sprinklers, but there would be fire alarms, smoke detectors, or carbon monoxide detectors.
No system, no pumps?
There would not.
Would you be able to illuminate the address sign together with the big sign? You said that the address itself is not being illuminated.
We can illuminate if you prefer that.
I just think for a safety standpoint, if you're illuminating everything else, why wouldn't you illuminate the address for safety would be beneficial?
Yes, we could do that.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for the architect? Being that we have no other comments for the architect at this time, Mr. Revere, would you like to speak with Mr. Rodasti?
Just to clarify, this cross-examination shall be limited solely to what Mr. Rodasti placed on the record, the design of the building.
Yes, I got it. It might be a little slow, but after the fifth time, I got it. Okay, is this a metal building?
Is it a metal building? I'm not sure of the exact construction type they're going to use yet. It's either going to be metal or wood.
All right, I'm talking about the maintenance building. Is that going to be a metal building? It's a metal roof? It's a metal roof?
So it's a... So the maintenance building is going to be block walls?
Block walls.
And it's going to have roof trusses, and it's going to have metal standing-seam roofing.
Okay. Now, when you designed the maintenance, did you design it around the type of vehicles that would be in there?
I designed the building to have a 14-foot-high, clear ceiling height, and it's 4,000 square feet.
Okay, so how many lifts would be in there?
I'm not sure of how many lifts there would be in there.
Okay, so if it's...
There is only one overha... There is only one overhead door, by the way.
If, using a lift that brings the vehicle or the equipment up maybe six or seven feet, right? You're saying that 14 feet is the highest at the top of the vehicle?
The, the underside of the roof trusses will be at 14 feet.
Okay. Now, the, the parts and the used parts and the debris material, will that be stored inside this maintenance shed, maintenance building? Politely, that was not the testimony. The testimony of storage came from Ms. Severino at the last meeting, where the statement was that everything would be stored inside the building.
The objection is sustained. There was no testimony from Mr. Adasti as to what's being stored. That's, that's an operational question, not an architectural question.
Okay, so let's go to the office buildings.
Yes.
Can we switch the thing to the, the slide to the office buildings? Okay, now, these are open-spaced design offices?
They're currently designed, yes, with an open space.
And I guess the people occupying will be using cubicles or something like that?
There may be cubicles, there may be interior walls. On the plan, we denote with dashlines some possible locations for interior walls. But we haven't designed the interior walls yet.
Just as a follow-up question to that, so that we can get past this. I have a, this, sorry. The question I have for you is, obviously, it would be subject to build-out at the time of rental, based upon what the tenant would want, correct?
Correct, and that's why it's not designed yet. We, we designed the, the building so that it would work. We designed it for egress purposes, we just...
And...
And then the, the exact walls would be at a later date. It would, there would be a fit-up plan made for them.
Build-out is usually, build-out is usually a function of the lease itself, correct?
Exactly, yes.
Thank you.
All right, is the office building going to be a, a metal building?
The, the office building is either going to be a steel or wood building.
So it could be metal?
It could be made of metal, steel is metal.
I think that you should clarify, you're talking about the infrastructure of the building, not the facade elements. If you could just distinguish.
Right, I'm talking about the, the physical structure.
I'm talking about the exterior walls. Are they metal or, or what? What are they?
So the, so what you see on the exterior walls is going to be stucco, stone, and above that metal roofing, the structure of the walls are either going to be made of steel or wood.
You're going to put stucco on a steel wall, is that what you're saying? I'm just clarifying, you know?
The walls are either going to be metal studs, or they're going to be wood studs. We haven't made that decision.
I'm, I'm talking about the exterior of the wall.
The exterior of the wall would have stucco or stone.
Stucco or stone, all the way to the roof?
Just as per the rendering, correct.
Okay, that's the, that's all the questions I have.
Thank you.
Thank you. And do we, any, based on those questions, does anybody have any questions, Mr. Adasti?
Well, we forgot one question, is the, is this going to have bathrooms? The maintenance building going to have bathrooms?
The, the main building will have bathrooms.
Will the maintenance building have bathrooms?
I don't believe so.
Well, what's the employee is going to do when they have to go to the bathroom if there's no bathroom in the maintenance?
Maintenance building is an ancillary building to the office of the contractor. The contractor, the commitment to the board is that the contractor will lease 50% of the building. So you have a nexus between the 50% of the building and the maintenance building.
I'm gonna, hold on, whoa, 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 whoa.
We're a little confused about what you're saying. We're just looking for clarification. We're not, you know, berating, just clarification. Now, you're saying that the maintenance building will have no bathrooms for the people working in the maintenance room, in the maintenance building?
The, the maintenance building is, is for the most part, a storage building. Whoever's using the maintenance building will be part of the office building. So they will have full access to the office building. Picture your house with a garage.
Yeah, it's a detached garage, you're saying, almost. Is that what you're describing?
Basically, yes.
Okay, now, will there be running water in the maintenance building?
There probably will be.
Okay. So somebody who is, is one of the employees has to walk over to the main o-office building to use the restroom? I'm just trying to get it in my, you know, clarification. There's no bathroom, okay.
Uh, hold on, hold on, whoa, 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 whoa. Mr. Revere was identified as the objector. I, I, I'm not, I, I'm happy to swear you in, ma'am, but I, I'm simply trying to figure out who, who's doing what at this point.
I can't ask him that. Okay, all right, I just, oh, I wanted to clarify the bathroom situation.
Thank you.
Being that there are no more questions, Mr. Adasti, Mr. Pape, do you have any additional witnesses?
Madam Chair, I have one additional witness this evening. I respectfully ask if I could have a three-to-five-minute recess just to speak to the witness and the applicant.
All right. I was going to ask if you'd mind if we had a recess. So we will be back, it's 10 of 10. We take testimony till 10:30, and obviously, with the public here, we will open public. But we'll be back in five minutes to try to keep this short.
Thank you.
Call the meeting back to order, thank you.
Ms. Brape, your show.
Madam Chair, Board members, I, this is your applicant's request, if this is acceptable to the Board. It is clear that Mr. Revere has a case to put on and as it's just about 10 o'clock, if our planner goes on, our planner will take 15 to 20 minutes conservatively to make the direct presentation, examination, we're at 10:30 in a split second. What I would ask is this, all of our fact witnesses have testified, the planner is the last witness to testify after all the fact witnesses. Clearly, we're going to be returning. I would appreciate it if we could relinquish the remainder of the evening to the public. I would have no objection to the public if they wish to comment openly and not confine their comments to examination. And ask that we be permitted to come to the next meeting where our planner begins the presentation and hopefully, we can conclude at that evening. Just, I don't think it's a fair to only allow five minutes to the applicant, to the objector, at this hour. So if that's acceptable, we're asking for when you give us a new hearing date. We'll begin with the planner's testimony, but to the extent that the Chair and the Board's comfortable, the remainder of the evening can be turned over to the public as you direct.
Just one minute, Ms. Brape. Okay, that would be fine. I think, given the hour, I think that's an appropriate solution, considering the fact that you're definitely coming back. You're gonna have your planner 15 to 20 minutes, that's like me saying executive session's gonna take 15 to 20 minutes, which we all know is not true. You know, I would, I would agree with you, I think that's the appropriate course of action here, considering the planner's testimony as well as the objector's case in chief. So I, Chairwoman has accepted that proposal, so we will, I'll let, we'll yield, you'll yield tonight, and Madam Chair, you can open to the public. Sure.
If we could work out what that next hearing date is.
Oh yeah, of course. Yeah, I'll take a look at the, let's open public, I'll take a look at the agendas in the meantime, and then I'll give you some dates that I might have in mind.
All right, just so we're all on the same page, Mr. Pape has asked that we delay hearing his planner until the next meeting, given the hour, so what we're going to do now is open it to the public. Anyone wishing to come forward and comment on what was heard this evening, please do so at this time.
Mr. Pape has waived that particular provision, and he's indicated that you're free to comment on the entire application.
Okay.
So if, before you do, I have to swear to you, if you would, please raise your right hand. Thank you. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments that you're about to present before the Board will represent the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Yes.
Sorry, does it go down?
And just for the record, remember, public sessions usually limited to five minutes per person.
Okay.
If you would, before, I know, it's a loud procedure, can you please state your name, spell your last name, and provide your address?
Yes, my name is Bonnie Revere, I live, R.I.V.I.E.R.E., I live at 1009 West Commodore Boulevard, my property and home is the one right next to the proposed construction site.
Thank you.
I have very, a lot of concerns, I mean, you know, we just finished building this house, we plan to spend, you know, many years there, enjoying our, you know, golden years. And my concerns are firstly, the noise and the vibration, there's no question that there will, there will be increased noise levels, daily operations with heavy machinery, trucks, and maintenance activities generate a lot of noise, and this could be really disruptive to my way of life and other people that live in the area. The vibrations are, you know, trucks make a lot of, you know, I mean, there's a lot of vibrations already on that road, I mean, there, trucks going by all the time, and trucks pulling in right next to my property definitely are gonna make a lot of vibrations. I'm worried about the air quality and the odors. These trucks have emissions, they, it's, it will affect the local air quality, this is a concern for me, and if I, you know, want, want at some point to sell my house, it's gonna, you know, lower the value of my property. I'm also worried about health issues. I mean, you know, these trucks have big pollutants, and, you know, I don't particularly wanna suck in the polluted air that these trucks are admitting, emitting. There's also odor, odors, you know, that come from fuel, and, you know, the trucks, the exhaust from the trucks. There's traffic and safety concerns. It'll, you know, we're definitely gonna have an increase in traffic because you've got, I think, it was said 50 parking spaces, so that's a lot of cars going, you know, coming right by my house every day to pull into this parking lot, not to mention these big, heavy trucks pulling in and out. It will, you know, wear on the road, too, you know, the road will deteriorate. The, you know, the visual and aesthetic impact is gonna be very negative. I mean, you know, they don't look nice, you know, big metal buildings don't look very nice, big trucks don't look nice, a big parking lot doesn't look nice. You know, all of these things are gonna impact the value of my property. And I think there'll be a perception in the area that this is turning, this area is turning more industrial than residential. And, you know, 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM, you know, 6:00 AM in the morning to have big trucks and pulling in is disruptive. I mean, you know, you, some people are still asleep at that time. I, we also asked a real estate consultant to give us his opinion, I won't read it because I went over a lot of the things that I just said, but I will read you his final conclusionary paragraph. "In our opinion, placing an infrastructure construction yard with a 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM, 4,000 square foot meet and garage and fueling facility adjacent to your single-family home at 1009 West Commodore Boulevard will reduce the value and your, value of your property and the quality of life." And, you know, when it's appropriate, I can, you know, submit that into the record.
Thank you for coming forward. Just to reiterate what was stated earlier, the applicant has already stated they're not going to have the fueling facility.
Well, I didn't, I didn't know that when I was.
Oh, no, 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 I'm just, I'm just stating for the record so we're all on the same page, that's all.
Okay.
Thank you.
I just have, could I just interrupt, can I just have one question, if I may?
Go ahead, Dr. Austin.
Actually, can I, can I ask a question to the?
Ms. Bonnie?
Ms. Revere?
Revere.
What, what zone does you have?
Whoa, whoa.
It's a commercial.
Highway commercial.
Highway commercial, so like a, you know.
Your home is not in a residential zone, it's in a highway commercial zone?
Excuse me?
Your home is not in a residential zone, it's in a highway zone?
Well, there are a lot of residential properties that around, around me.
I'm sorry?
There are a lot of residential properties around me.
But your home itself is.
It's in a commercial.
In a commercial zone, thank you.
Commercial highway, which is not like an industrial maintenance garage.
Hold, ma'am, I'm so sorry. Actually, I have a question.
Just, just for the, for the newer Board's members' knowledge, the Reveres were in front of this Board as part of a variance application to construct their home on this lot, and that was probably five, maybe six years ago or so, give or take. The question I have for you, though, is, you heard the applicant offer to switch the driveways, right, make the, make the truck driveway further away from your home, and bring the vehicle, the car vehicle, the office workers' driveway closer to your home. Are you in agreement with your husband?
I, I guess, I'm not in agreement with any of it.
No, 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 I'm saying, but.
So I don't wanna answer that question.
Okay, I was just, all right.
I don't think so. Thank you so much. Good evening. If you could just use the microphone, please.
Oh, I don't need it, I got a big mouth.
Only becau, only because it's being recorded. And actually, even I have a big mouth, and it won't pick me up if I'm not talking directly into the mic. If you would, please raise your right hand. Thank you. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments that you're about to present before the Board will represent the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you very much. If you would, please state your name, spell your last, and provide your address.
Joan Homit, H.O.M.T.H., 720 West Commodore Boulevard.
Thank you very much.
No problem. Now, my concerns are, they've already, on West Commodore Boulevard, they've already built three warehouses. One's still being built, not too far from my house, and the truck increase traffic is unbelievable. Used to be a nice, quiet neighborhood, and it is a residential neighborhood, nice, quiet neighborhood, now all you get is the trucks roaring through there, down, down, you know, doing their brakes, blah, 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 all the way down the road. It's just ridiculous. Can't sit out on the front porch and have a cup of coffee without all this traffic going by. Going down on the other side of West Commodore on 571, at any given time, there's a ton of traffic. Great Adventure's open, there's no way on 537 you're getting down, 571, it's all backed up. Christmas time, you have the outlets, they park all up and down 571 around the Christmas time. You can't, I, I don't know how these big rigs are gonna come down, two-lane highway, make a wide turn and into that, where they're talking. It's just not, it's not gonna be done. Besides the fact you got the children getting off their school buses, the value of our houses are all gonna go down. I just put a lot of money into my house, making it, gonna be the rest of my life being there, and now it's like, I don't wanna be here, it's too noisy. So, it's a big concern for everybody, I know it is. Thank you.
Thank you for coming forward.
Good evening.
Good evening.
If you would, please raise your right hand. Thank you. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that testimony, information, questions, or comments that you're about to present before the Board will represent the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
If you would, please state your name, spell your last name, provide your address.
Janet Nordzy, N.O.O.R.D.Z.Y., 967 West Commodore Boulevard.
Thank you.
Okay, so I've been a resident of Jackson since 1989, and I, I believe I am commercial residential, I'm in Lot 13, three lots away from this, whatever this is happening. I'm concerned about what is, what is actually gonna be happening there, concerned about the pollution, everybody has wells, I'm worried about the well water. Traffic is terrible on 571 now, so I don't see how it's gonna, how it's gonna work, but, you know, I guess they're gonna end up putting a falling street in there at some point. So I am worried about all that Ms. Revere said, and the other lady. My property values, of course, will go down. And to me, it was always a residential area, and now it's, it's just gonna be a mess. So I, I don't even wanna see it happening, but, you know.
Did you know that that area is actually highway commercial?
Where I live is residential commercial.
Well, no, I'm, let me rephrase that. I'm not speaking for your home, I'm speaking for where this is. This is actually zoned highway commercial.
No, I don't, why would I know? Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much for coming forward.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to come forward?
Paul Revere, 1009 West Commodore.
You're already sworn, sir.
Do you want me to swear myself in, or?
No, you've already been sworn.
Okay.
I, I just wanna put on the record, it's typically out of the ordinary for the objector to comment during public session, but go ahead, that's, go ahead.
Gotta turn it on the bottom.
Okay, I do wanna respond to this thing about Mr. Hofstein. Yeah, I had a lot I owned for 30 years, and it was in a highway commercial area, okay? And I got a, I took every step, I got my LOIs, it took me like five years, and I got all the permits. I completed my home just a month ago, okay, it's a brand-new home. Now, if you were to ask me, if I knew, I, I built that house because I was depending upon the zoning. It's highway commercial, I said this is not a problem, you know, it could be a bagel shop, a, a bank, an office, that would not upset me. It'd be nice, I could walk across and get a bagel. So it didn't have no problem with that. I would have not invested hundreds of thousands of dollars in a brand-new home if I knew that it would be industrial, okay? It would still be a vacant lot, and I'd be trying to sell it as an industrial also. All right, I just wanna clear, clarify that. I relied on your master plan and your zoning when I invested hundreds of thousands of dollars. Okay, now, I do wanna say that I, I don't like that the applicant has moved the use variance to the rear of the application. Normally, the use variance is discussed before you even get into the, the nitty-gritty of the application. And, and the reason for that is because some use variances, or site plans, can't be tweaked to make them fit the area. Now, in this case, we're, PM, I did some research, PM, their headquarters is located in an industrial zone, okay? They knew when they bought this property, it was highway commercial. Somehow, they've figured out that they can convert it to an industrial use. Okay, now, an industrial use is a Class D variance, okay? Let me look this up. Trying to be organized here. Okay, you, in order to meet a Class D variance, it's the highest level of variance you, you have to get. I mean, it's the most difficult. You have to have special reasons, lack of special reasons, you have to have special reasons justifying and granting the variance. The benefits proposed use do not outweigh the potential negative on the community. That's the first criteria. Somebody's gonna, the burden of proof to demonstrate the necessity of variance is on the applicant, and so far, it hasn't been met. Okay, there's alternatives, there's other industrial sites here in Jackson that can be used, and they were, and they're in the appropriate areas. Okay, let me just. So there's a positive criteria that the, the use variance will promote the general welfare of the municipal land use. Specifically, the applicant has so far not shown it would advance any purpose of the zoning, provide adequate light, open space, or promote a desirable visual environment. Those are some of the things that you would get by granting it. There's a failure to meet the negative criteria. The applicant has to prove the variance can be granted without substantial detriment to public good, without impairing the intent, purpose of the zoning plan and zoning ordinance. The proposed use could, could potentially cause significant impacts on the surrounding neighborhood, and certainly my house. What is that?
Your time limit.
And it's also inconsistent with the master plan, so.
So.
If my time is out, thank you for hearing me, and thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
All right, so just a couple, couple things, and just to clarify for the Board, I don't want there to be any misunderstanding, and 'cause we have new members. This is a application for a, now for preliminary site plan approval without final, as well as a use variance. The applicant did not bifurcate the application. As long as I've been doing land use law, and as many times as I've appeared before other Boards and presented applications, my planner, as Mr. Pape has indicated, will be his last witness, my planner is often my last witness as well. The planner ties together the application and sets forth the variance criteria. Here, the applicant needs what's called a D1 variance, and it's called a D1 variance because it falls under NJ, it's, it's defined statutorily under NJSA 40:55D-70D1. So it's called the D1 variance, and it is the most difficult variance to get under the law, and that's because of the holding in the Medici case. And the Medici case tells us that in order for the applicant to get a D1 variance, they must meet both the positive and negative criteria. The negative criteria being, as it always is, the variance can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good, and without substantial impairment to the intent of the zone plan and zone ordinance. That is the language as to what negative criteria is, word for word. The positive criteria for a D1 variance, similar to what was just placed on the record, but just to clarify, the positive criteria is something we talk about as the special reasons, or the particular suitability of the particular site for the use that's proposed, okay? Not only that, the applicant has to meet the enhanced quality of proof as defined under Medici, and that's to tell us why the, the governing body has not saw fit to include this type of use within the zone, considering there are reports to them every year under the MLUL, as well as their, their task of reviewing the ordinances of the township each year to determine if, if ordinance changes are necessary. That having been said, those proofs have not been heard yet because the planner has not yet testified, okay? So I agree to a certain extent that we have not yet heard that testimony. However, as we heard from Mr. Pape, he asked to bring his planner the next time around to wrap up his application, which, again, considering the fact that it's now 10:25, probably the right call. You know, so, so again, use my version of the variance criteria when evaluating this case, because it's accurate and succinct, and, and it echoes what the court decided in the Medici case, which is the controlling case on D1 variance. And again, take that, you know. And again, take that, you know, with, you know, the applicant has the burden to satisfy both the positive and negative criteria required for D1 variance, period. And we will see if that occurs when the planner testifies. I have nothing further.
Mr. Renner, hold on one second. We haven't closed public session yet. Is there anyone else wishing to come forward and make a comment?
Thank you for raising your right hand. Do you solemnly swear affirm that testimony, information, questions, or comments that you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you, sir. If you would please state your name, spell your last, and provide your address.
Jim Sillicia, S-I-L-E-C-C-H-I-A. My address is 6 Harfield Drive in Jackson. I know this is preliminary, we'll be coming back for final, but I think some of the things I'm gonna say may not wanna be taken into consideration. You discussed, I guess, before I make my assumption, has this new plan been provided to the fire officials for their review and have they signed off on it?
The revised plan with the two driveways has not been provided to the fire department for their review.
And it will be. Along those lines, and you'll, you'll find, if you go back and look, whenever I come up and I talk, a lot of it is about fire, fire stuff. The buildings we've talked about have, are gonna not have any sprinklers in it. You're gonna have, if there's 50 parking spaces, I'm gonna make the assumption, one person per parking spot, the building may have 50 people in max at any time.
Just try to talk into the microphone, please.
Sorry. It just moves on me. Jackson Township right now has a tremendous problem within their fire departments. They are a volunteer fire department with very limited life members, okay? They are begging for volunteers. What I suggest is that the applicant and the engineer and whoever else looks into getting something into these buildings to help the fire department before the fire department gets there, because it could be any length of time, okay? My second comment, and I understand the ADA doesn't require it, and I can, every time I hear this, it jives me nuts. When we have a two-story building and it's gonna be an office building, I'm not sure why size of the building matters. If you're an employer and you're on the second floor and your building doesn't have elevators, you're basically saying you'll never hire disabled people. And I'm not sure that's something you wanna present to people. So I would consider, you know, even though it's a small building, if you're gonna hire people that may need an elevator on that, in that building, so... That's all. Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you for coming forward. Anyone else wishing to come forward and make comment about this evening, please do so at this time? Seeing no one else come forward, I'm gonna go ahead and close public session. Do you wanna set a date or...
I was supposed to be doing this, but I was listening.
Do you have one short comment, just short?
No.
Not this evening, sir, when you come back.
Mr. Pape, November 6th, we only have one application on. Is that something that would be acceptable to you? Or November 20th? You join rose and bloom again.
November 20th works, Mr. Murphy.
Very good. There is one application listed for November 20th. Accordingly, you will be the second application on for that evening. No additional notice will be required, but I presume that the applicant will waive time if applicable?
We do waive time. We'll grant an extension of time through the end of the year, and if additional time is required, we'll, we'll grant the same. I'll follow this oral representation with a letter to your board secretary tomorrow. If I may ask, Mr. Antilli has testified and his testimony is concluded and he has been cross-examined by the board, the board's professionals, and the public. Do you require Mr. Antilli to be present during the presentation by the planner? And I have the same question for Mr. Rodasty.
Mr. Antilli and Mr. Rodasty both have been questioned by yourself, this board, the professionals, and the objector, so no. The answer is no, they will not be required to attend the meeting on November 20th.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So we're carried to November 20th, no further notice, no further publication. We'll be prepared to present the testimony of the planner and will be prepared to witness and participate in the objector's case in chief.
Very good. I will make that announcement for the record, okay? Application number three on this evening's agenda, while heard, has not been completed. AVE Partners LLC, which is preliminary, preliminary site plan 918 with use variance 3497, Block 2901, Lots 7, 9, and 10. This application will be carried with no requirement for additional notice to the November 20th, 2024, meeting of the Jackson Township Zoning Board of Adjustment. The applicant has waived time through December 31st of 2024, which I greatly appreciate. And that will conclude this hearing for this evening. Thank you, Mr. Pape.
Motion to adjourn?
Moving.
Second.
All in favor?